Mr. Conley.
Here.
Ms. Fosker.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Laws is also excused tonight. Mr. Owens is present. Carmen Avantini, our city planners here. You have in your packet our minutes from our June 7th meeting, so we have a motion to approve those minutes.
I make the motion.
Second. Any questions or concerns on those minutes? All favor of approval, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Thank you. And our agenda tonight, you need a motion to approve that. I'll second. Any changes or additions, please?
If I'm looking at the Denver track, it says Tuesday, July 7th.
Mine says July 7th.
Actually, I'm looking at the wrong one.
You have the wrong one.
I know.
You're gonna have the match?
That's what I meant to say is it says Tuesday, July 7th.
Okay. Good. So...
It's not July 7th.
Right. So it's, um... So with that correction to our agenda, any other items? So with that correction, all favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Thank you. Public comments. This is the time anybody would like to address the planning commission, we'd love for you to step up to the podium. Give us your name and touch it down your mind.
Wayne McIntyre, 350 needlework. Just giving you an update. You have better? No better? I use my professor voice. Step in. Anyways, just giving you an update on the library, just left from there. We did get a, or they voted on a new contractor, but that one withdrew. So now it's Nugent Builders, gonna be building the library. I think that's turned out pretty good. Great outfit, so they'll be there for the groundbreaking Saturday night at 5:00. That was about all I had, I don't know exactly when they're gonna start, but hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Same thing, we will move on to our agenda, we have no public hearings for this evening, so into our new business. Like a motion for us to consider the site plan for Rockford Ambulance on White Creek Avenue. All favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so let's look at our notes on that, so Mr. Avantini, if you agree to do 11, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you should have a letter dated June 30th, this is the revised final site plan for Rockford Ambulance. Just a, this is a little different because we have a couple of items that you have to make determinations on part of your review. The first is that an ambulance facility is not specifically identified in the table of uses. But as is written here, it's really no more objectionable than offices or medical or dental buildings and offices, and those are permitted in this district. So in my review of it, I think that it's an acceptable use and appropriate for this district, but that's just one of those determinations you would have to make when reviewing it. And going into the site plan itself, that you need all these setback requirements. They are showing a future building location on here, and it is good to plan out for anything you want to do as it comes along in the future. I just wanted to make sure you're clear that you're not approving that tonight, that will come back as a separate site plan at some point in time. The building design, they have provided an attractive building, and they're using some materials here that a couple of which I'm just become acquainted with in recent weeks. And so they've got the material samples here. In my opinion, I think they're providing quality materials that meet the intent of the ordinance. The block that they're using is kind of a new material, folks are starting to use it quite a bit, and it's attractive. It's different than a, it's a stone, but it's attractive, and that's the goal, we want to ensure that it has a quality appeal to it. They're using hardwood plank, which is cement board, which is also a high-quality material instead of using vinyl or something like that, and a seamless metal roof. So you did receive elevations with you, and I think you'll probably agree that it's gonna be a nice addition to that particular area. They need the parking requirements of the ordinance. The second determination you have to make is, this is kind of a, when it comes to access management, it's kind of a tricky location for them. Because where they're located right now, where they have the entryway proposed, it's closer to, but not completely across from the entryway to the shopping center. Okay, so, but if they move it farther to the north, so they're centered from the ones on the opposite side of the road, they're pulling themselves closer to the drive for the property to the north. So one way or the other, they're not gonna meet a requirement of the ordinance, just because of the existing sites and the way they're laid out. So what the letter indicates here is, you really have to make two determinations within this. One is, number one, is this the appropriate location? And number two, if so, do they need a variance, or do you feel that because the site can't meet, you know, and there's just no way to meet one of the criteria, that it's, you know, it's an existing non-conformant situation, so they don't have to go for a variance? And they did mention too in their response letter that the road commission has already approved the location here too. I guess in a nutshell, it's just, once again, you have to make the determination that, you know, this is the best location, and they're just not gonna be able to meet one of the requirements, but if you feel comfortable with it being an existing non-conformant situation, then you can approve the site plan accordingly. Under landscaping, there are parking lot landscaping requirements, and that generally applies to the parking lots, but they still do apply to this one. So instead of having them, you know, put an island in where it really wouldn't accomplish much, I'd ask them to put some shrubs on the area closer to the road, on the outside portion of the drive. So when you drive by, the spaces will be screened visually from the Nitski intent for interior parking, so parking lot landscaping. So I think they met the intent of the ordinance. They're gonna have an irrigation system also for a lot of landscape areas. The lighting plan, they did provide white fixtures that are acceptable, they're going, they didn't have enough time to get a photometric grid put together, so they're gonna forward that to me after, and we'll handle that administratively if you're finding it acceptable. And then the last item is other department and agency reviews, and I know that Mike Bearavoltz, the engineer, has commented on this, and felt that there, everything that he still is looking at can be reviewed when he takes a look at the construction drawings. So with that, we're recommending approval of the site plan. Condition upon the following, now there's the two planning commission determinations, and really, it's all you have to do in this is as long as everybody agrees with them, then you're all set. The first one is a planning commission determination that this is a permitted use in the H.C. district. And the second one is planning commission determinations regarding the entryway location and I've already got through that. So with the recommendation for approval, the following would be the conditions. Number one, the submission of material samples for planning commission acceptance. They've got them here tonight, so you can actually, if you find them acceptable, you cross that one out. Cross that one out. The second is submission of a photometric grid for administrative review and approval. And then the last one, review and approval from other important departments, consultants, and agents. So if you have any other questions, I'll give the answer.
Questions, Chairman?
Looks like pretty much everything's been met. That road is currently maintained by Kent County.
Any questions for Chairman? Did everybody have a chance to look at the building materials that were over there? Because it could be nice to them if we can, if you have a chance to look at those, and we can just approve that tonight, or get that off. If there was one last thing to be done, so if you have a chance to look at that.
Mr. Chairman, just a, just a, so we're being consistent. We're not looking to avoid variance standards. What we have here is a situation, it's not conforming because of all the surrounding uses. So no matter where you put that entryway, it's not gonna be one of the standards. So we're basically looking at it as an existing non-conforming lot in terms of access in particular. So just so we're not, it doesn't look like we're avoiding variance standards, that's not what we're doing here.
That shared driveway concept that we have to do would eliminate one more curb cut out there if we left that there. Where it's currently proposed. The driveway now, because they show it out of line, have a future driveway on a pipeline.
Yes. Oh, yeah. That would, so you'd have basically two buildings accessing it instead of one.
We'd be able to eliminate one curb cut.
Yeah, exactly.
And I looked at what if they did something that shared entrance with the use to the north, but it's all gravel, it just, it's, it'd be too big a headache for them to even try to push forward with that.
That future building site, is that owned by each person? Or Rockford Ambulance?
No, it's just used for storage, or wheelchair van, or something like that. It's like a plank roof, so, and the amount of equipment that would, you know, storage for medical equipment and that kind of stuff. I've learned over the last thirty-three years, you just can't have it up store. And you fill it up, don't you get it?
You have a question? Alright, I'd like to, just so that we are, I don't want anybody in the future to think that we tried to sneak something through here, since we are, the ambulance facility is not specifically mentioned in that highway commercial. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve, that we think that that's a permitted use there separately from the site plan, just so that way we have that on record, so down the road it doesn't come back to bite us. So I will make that motion, if there's support on that. Any discussion on that? And so we're voting to say that it's okay, that this ambulance use is acceptable to us in this setting for highway commercial.
Just a quick order, we didn't, we didn't want to amend our agenda for that?
Or I can, I can make a motion to approve the site plan contingent on the ordinance.
Can we add that to our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure you need to.
I don't know.
It's because it's so inter, into growth.
To the site plan, and that's a part of that?
I'm not sure that, you know, did you have to. Just so it didn't come to somebody down the line, so you made it illegal, you approved it again, and it didn't work out. But I'm fine with that. Well, Mr. Chairman, in the future, we're just handling cases similar.
Alright, so...
Are you actually asking if we're gonna make a modification to highway commercials on the window?
No, what I'm just saying, because it does not, in our table of use, it does not say ambulance facility in highway commercial. So we're basically, we're, Carmen's recommendation is that it fits with what's in highway commercial. I just want that to be separate, so that way later on, somebody can't say, well, ours should equally as fit in highway commercial, and we should want ours to be on.
I would suggest that you have to do on fire hardwood plank commercial table, so that includes that. Yeah, I'm not sure if that's what you suggested.
No.
Maybe we can do that, maybe we just can't do that in this meeting.
Right.
The one thing we don't have in the ordinance, and I've got my list of the next round, and there's one with a table of uses, which get updated all the time anyway, there's a similar use determination wording in there. We didn't have that in there, because normally I would per section and say, because you've got the ability to make similar use determinations. It's the planning commission's burden to decide what uses are close enough that they fit in a particular district. If they were, you know, proposing, you know, the prepared jet engines, no, it's not even close to what's allowed in that district. But what they're proposing is very similar to, and no more impacting than medical offices, dental offices.
Well, it is different.
Same type as today. You know, the materials they're using are gonna be similar, and, you know, actually, it's, you're gonna have less people there.
The refreshment will be coming in. You'll have all the refreshments, right?
Yeah.
Alright, so we have motion of support on that, any other discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Okay. So now then, on Carmen's letter, then we can address what he has down there for the approval with those points on it. Yes? Yes, we do need to discuss that. So what you thought, Kent County Road Commission says that where the driveway is right now is acceptable, acceptable to them. So we wanna go with that, and we wanna ask for the ordinance?
I see, we seem to delay the title. They've already got permission, and it's something that they can't conform with at all. It's an open.
So, and then, so the point A in there as well, consultation with the city traffic consultants, they're saying no on that, then this, so, this one, Kent County. Alright, so then we can strength that one as well. Does anybody wanna take a look at building supplies over here, or we can remove that, or from our conditions for approval, if we, if you're good with the building supplies now, otherwise we can leave it in there, and it can be approved later, if you've been scheduled to.
Yeah, I think it's gonna, I think they've, the materials they've chosen, like the reason they have the wording in there is not only the nature of it, it's that let's keep folks from just trying to do things as cheaply as possible. They obviously haven't done that, they're looking to have a quality that moves there. And the materials they've chosen, if they're wanting the architecture of the building, they haven't done so, they're trying to cause that.
Yeah, unless I overlook it, is there anything touching about future building that they're putting there, matching the same building materials? It shouldn't be something that...
In my opinion, I wouldn't touch that at all right now, because they're not giving them any kind of approval. So it's best just to leave it, and then when they apply them, then you can go with that.
They do have to apply to build that building, yes, even though it shows on there.
Yeah, they're gonna come into, for a second.
In there, it says, "Imple that we're not looking at that."
Mr. Chairman, you can make as a part of your motion, if you want, that that would, because if it became a much smaller building, you could put in there that you want to see it again, if they decide to look second building, that's up to you.
Any other thoughts, please?
I looked at the material that they've been using, like I was interested in it, and there are a lot of benefits to it. It's just they're waterproof, fireproof, they provide them heating, the powder, all kind of conditions, so they should stand up to, under conditions, and they've got good for years to come.
All the seasons in one week? Alright, any other thoughts on building materials? Okay. Alright, so, so under our conditions of approval, then at the bottom of Carmen's letter, I think we're all agreeing on building materials, if they're helpful, so we can cross it off.
Did we say the thing that covers the whole construction?
Well, they're gonna submit it down for administrative review and approval there, so. And then, as Carmen just mentioned, do you, if it's your pleasure to add in there the wording that future building has to, you want the site plan, and make sure that's stated, that the site plan's coming back to us?
They don't do it.
Yeah. I agree with her, so we actually have something that didn't like them.
Mr. Chairman, the reason I'm asking is, I'm sure that ordinance has a threshold, that if it's over a certain size, it goes to planning commission, if it's under a certain size, it's a duty of the state. So that's your call, if you want to get involved in it, if you don't. There are requirements still that it has to manage the building, the primary building, that's any accessory structure, I don't know if it's important, so.
And the building, if they were close to the size that they're proposing here, if they're not proposing, possibly have a future. And this is a forty by eighty, forty nine, that's so far beyond me that now we guess that...
Yeah.
So if my notes are correct, Chairman? The planning commission determinations, we addressed those, and that first condition of approval, we have, feel that the applicant has met that. So if that's correct, then we just need a motion just to approve the site plan contingent on those points two and three. Any other discussion on that? So we're approving the site plan with those, what are number two and three in Carmen's letter. So all favor of that, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Most, who cares? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, under all business, we return to our discussion on the master plan, so Mr. Avantini, if you'd like to lead us to the last thing as well?
Just, let's simply begin with the process. So the next step in this process, if you're okay with distributing it with minor changes, would be that it is distributed, it goes out to the various agencies, surrounding communities, utilities, and the like. And they have, I've got a piece of forty-five base to comment on it. And then after they comment here, it comes back to you for your final blessing of it. I have to check and see, I can't recall, I know Jerry, you were involved with it, can you recall if this, if the previous master plan went to see, how it's for approvals, do you remember? Let me see. I'm just wondering, because it hasn't... It doesn't have to, that's why I'm asking. No, actually, the planning commission adopted it, they're, they're the only... Yep, so what would happen? That's the check to the balance of it, yeah. So what would happen is, if you're good with it, or if you're not, but if you're good with it, we distribute it for public comment to surrounding communities, utilities, and the like. And then those comments, along with any changes in the planning, comes back to you for your final, hopefully, doctorate at that time. And we hold a public hearing, give people a chance to comment on it, so that's the process. So this isn't the last time you will see this. Okay? And I know, Kathy gave me some, there was, like, for example, there was a sentence, a couple sentences, he didn't make it out of the page somehow, and I'll look on that. And just a couple minor things that you're, there, I'll make sure I can change and go distribute it. So I guess at this point, I guess I'm looking for any other comments that you might have for changes, and then your decision is to let me, you want to see it again, or we can put it out for this, if we change the comment. And I did, and she did mention the existing land use, that the, up on the cross, the corner from the brewing company. The park wasn't shown as over there, so it's right on the future land use, but not existing. So I'll make sure that she fits with that, I'll make it.
My screen was frozen, but the other ones there at the corner, I think there was another corner, and some of them that were still showing, and it was one page. Mine's dead in the water.
The future land use or the existing?
I remember he brought up the same time he was talking about, about the DVD. There's one I think that's the Elmen.
It's all purple here. Sure, public, are they on the, on the page fifty-eight?
Well, fifty-eight on here.
Is it on future land use?
Yes.
Yeah, is it this one, right here?
The, alright, Elmen, Second Street, that's sort of like public parking lot.
Right in that area, no.
And it shows general commercial. The same way with...
Okay, so Elmen, and where?
Basically, Elmen's right here. There's a parking lot, just like the... Yeah, a lot there behind.
You can see it here a little bit better.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, these are, here should, their colors are, yeah, they should be general commercial.
The library here, Terry one, and behind that, there's a parking lot.
Yeah, and there's a Dr. Shane there, I mean, this one.
So we got that, right? So where else?
Material ones down, we got, you need that one too.
Okay, well, these are all part of the downtown future.
So even though that shows general commercial, you know, fire burns in there, or you can say it's not, or you stop there.
Future land use, you know, the, yeah, the new Landbury, so. On the old side, but it's hurt. Because, you know, public buildings are permitted in the downtown. Yeah, even the future shows that Elmer Blue has public facility, it's a good thing.
Sorry, did you find any grammar?
That blue area in there.
That, on the website, the city website, is it still the old master plan, it's not the proposed one?
I got the outside, I don't think it's the old, I think it's the old one.
I mean, it's probably, you say it's gonna be towards some of the other local, other areas to look at it. Local areas to look at that and like some are like C V D and any of the other ones are working on anything that means that they get to look at that to make sure what changes they're doing right here now.
Yeah, it should be on the website, yeah. So definitely post that, and we'll get to know it. And I'll, and what we can do is I'll get these changes made in regard to being decided to okay to distribute it. I'll make sure again, you know, the.
You know, even like the money and stuff and the Romans come and stuff like, maybe things in the.
We distribute that.
But we didn't.
That's the hour to be to look at it.
Well, and that's what I mean. Are they gonna have?
No, we're gonna.
Well, we, I think the best part is to put a note on the webpage and say, you know, it's open for review right now, master plans. Here's the link. If you have any comments, you know, we can.
Yeah, I don't want to watch that.
Okay. Alright, so does anybody else see anything on there but? Yeah, I have a question. Yes. Jerry Hall or Gerald Hall?
Which one do you want to call me?
I see you're out there with both. One of the other.
Now, which one do you want?
My real name is Gerald. Most people wouldn't know me by that, so let's go by that.
You don't want to be known.
Who would you say that's called by your parents?
So let's go by Steve.
So which one do you want? Oh, Gerald's fine. I guess the proper name.
Proper name.
Kids in other states can pick their proper name.
Kathy, you have a question there?
Page fifteen, um, Fred Meyer White Pine Trail. Were we gonna add something about the North Country Trail going? Being connected now?
I mean, my notes we have several. I did have, I know we put that in the summer, but we. It was in uh the White Pine Trail, and it's likely, or it's like second bullet down from issue two. And there was several little here and there. Square Field was, uh, Friends of Square Field, not used by the school district. What did you hear?
Thirteen on your left.
It was thirteen on yours.
This district doesn't use it at all?
So like, we should call it Friends of Square Field?
Yeah, it was, you have it used by the school district, only it's used by Friends of Square Field.
Okay.
Well, the school doesn't use it at all for maintain or do anything.
Maintain what?
And then, um, at the top, uh, the second bullet down and opportunities, there was adding in North Country Trail. I think that's just lucky you said you were gonna add him from here in the middle. Yeah, I just don't have a lot of information on that, so I need to contain. Go. And I'm I'm also, um, Elaine indicated you can get me the digital copy of the newer rendering of the library building dropped in there too. That's the other thing too. If you happen to come across, you know, for somebody who's supposed to be better photo at many point in the review process, it's easy enough for us to change that out.
Did you get any other events added in?
We did put, yeah, we did put some events in there. Yeah, I remember where we did it because it's under Chamber of Commerce.
Well, you know you need to put on by churches. That's not a chamber. That's definitely something that you need after all the local churches get together for a event once a year. Then there was the Chamber to put on. The library has their reading and through the summer, so that should be included in there too. I'm not looking it in. I squeezed it out. I'm just going from last time we had discussion of this.
Yeah, we did. I know we put language in there because I went over it to Kathleen. You know, page fourteen, that's community announcement. I don't know where you put it, you know, anywhere with the.
I remember last time I looked at it, it was up there. The only event it has is twenty five thousand, which makes it look like a one five thousand. You know, the museum has a parish over last week in July. And that's the end of the time too.
I'm gonna do this search because I mean, I know we quite often talk about the the various events that the Chamber spots is.
Yeah, festivals around the cultural menu.
Okay, it's a very. Under evaluation management.
The page? Okay.
That in the sixteen, the game has added two. I'm here at page seventeen.
Oh, you're, wait. Can you see it in the body of the the page?
Yeah, I got sixteen, but.
Okay.
Like those are meant.
Okay, I've got it.
Alright, so your wrap sentence on sixteen and then are you getting any more detailed sub-area plans to give out of the master plan?
Yeah.
Do you need any more detailed sub-area plans, any other? Or new, new sub-area? I don't know, just some.
Yeah, I could, um. How do you do?
Something happened to her.
That was a very good comment. I'm just, I know you went over the like the Chamber events and stuff, or I'm just not, I'm like, we went over it? I'm gonna do a word search.
It's not about the schedule. I don't know, uh, you guys, post something.
Is it a large density residential?
Page?
Seventeen.
I'm in there.
This name you've carried during the lower city residential?
Yes.
Is it all the city and is intended to hold single-family development in the neighborhood itself? The difference seems to change, saying density development from one to five minutes per day. Does that mean you can have a, a building within there?
No, actually within it anymore, it is lot size. It's just a range of lot sizes. And we're not looking to change any, let's face it, most of the, you know, this is the House of Garden stuff.
Yeah, so, um, do you want to make, put those things in there and email it to us and then everybody could look at that when you get it and then we can just make the decision to get it distributed?
Okay.
Yes, I think, yes.
Should we make the decision to get it distributed now, which changes because otherwise that timeframe's going to.
Well, it's your your call whether you want to look at it again before it goes out or.
No, but there's changes when it will be brought to us with people that have an email there too, so.
They're gonna get a shot at it. And it's just, just for common.
Okay, so, one second.
Yeah, sure.
And still email a copy to us when you.
Yeah, of course. Kind of like this thing with next to the stone, it's a living document, continue to change it and massage it here and there.
It's just that it should be looked at. I believe it, within the plan.
Yeah, we, I mean, we've used it, we've used it over the years now for some, but, you know, when there are issues come up about uses, that's a thousand. Basically, we're just updating it to the twenty sixteen. Changing the way the use of the building.
Alright. Okay, so everybody good with that? Time to get what's going?
Yeah. Obviously, I'm.
Okay, somebody like to make that motion that we approve for in the sometime? Support? Okay, all favor aye?
Aye.
All oppose? No? Thank you. Alright. Correspondents. Yes, Barb, you got anything for us?
No, I'm not sure if I'll be at your next planning commission meeting. Um, we'll see. We have a new manager, I believe, starting August one, and I don't believe that will be here because we have an interim city clerk starting, um, after the next council meeting, and she will be taking minutes at both the council and the planning commission meeting. So I see a couple of new faces at this table. If, um, I'm still needed, I will be here on the ninth, I believe, but I'm not sure yet. We'll see how things go. Certainly, we'll push all all your agenda items forward until that time. Not with Carmen today at Korea, we've been working on some exciting things, but we just can't talk about it yet. We do have some good things coming your way. You probably all know I'm probably the last one to tell. Some good things are coming your way, and so, um, I believe your August meeting will be a good one for you.
Has she had a name for the new city clerk?
It's a new, it's an interim city clerk, um, and her name is Christine Witt, and her contract is going to go to the council on the fourteenth. She's going to help us with the election and with some of our cooking duties until we hire a new city clerk. And that has been posted today on the website, in the local Post newspaper, and it's also on the Michigan Municipal League website, so we'll be taking resumes. Um, I believe that hire will be made by the new city manager, Michael Womack. So Christina probably will be with you for a couple of months. I think she'll be working up to about twenty-five hours a week when her contract's approved. She's still at Nelson Township. She's the deputy there.
Right, and comments from planning commission members?
In the, uh, master plan, access management standards? So it should be appropriate under the city's code, and the M D A standard could be applied or related to the whole situation in the city. I'd like to have us look at.
People, yeah?
Have a busy weekend, don't have?
Yes.
Christmas in July, around the downfall, evidently somehow, uh, crackers supply has some sort of thing out there too. Place going out, they got vendors coming to set up, and so on market, they have their Christmas in July thing out there. Library got their.
Library.
Right here, and they got concert, by the C V D P. Well, they're out singing, they're paying for it.
No, I'm not going.
Main street, they have to be playing.
Alright, we'll go flip the polling for who wants to be.
I guess.
Okay, so you're in the city council, well. Yes.
I just want to thank you for coming in. You're not gagging on our team.
Very welcome.
And you too.
We're we're gonna try to keep her as long as we can here to help lift the woolen. Quick council. And the groundbreaking ceremony will be at five o'clock on Saturday. You know, probably when you're either you paid a, you played an intricate part in making your fall happen. You know, so we turned the penny and all the staff, so a lot of exciting things happening. And this, and Vera will be here for, our contract with her is still outstanding for. Thank you all.
Carmen, you got anything else for us? Let's just now, uh, reiterate, sure, it's, and it's also due to your health, in particular, for.
Thank you.
That's nice. And some cabinet, seven, two managers, and Nellens as well, she has the experience shows.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yes, indeed. Right, what should I do? Uh, I guess you got it first.
Alright.
It's four. Okay. All favor aye?
Aye.
All oppose? You got it, thank you.